Twenty-two, this is the Carney Board of Aldrin meeting. I'll call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shirley, you had a chance to take role.
I have taken role. Everybody's present. You do have a form.
We'll move on to personal appearances this evening. The first item under personal appearances is we are excited to have Carney High School freshman Whitaker Stewart with us this evening. He is our Missouri Class One State Swimming Champion. We do have a proclamation that we'll read here in a few minutes presented by Eric Marshall, our Parks Director. We also have Jessa Hahn with us. And after we read the proclamation, if you'd like to come up and share a few words and then we'll officially present Mr. Whitaker with his proclamation.
Proclamation congratulating freshman Whitaker Stewart, Carney High School State Champion Swimmer at the Missouri Class One State Swimming Tournament. Whereas the Carney High School Swim Team competed in the Class One Missouri State Swimming Tournament. And whereas such an achievement requires complete physical dedication and time devoted to conditioning, training, practice, and outstanding ability. And whereas freshman Whitaker Stewart was the All-Conference Champion in the 200 Medley Relay, 500 Freestyle, 200 Individual Medley, and the 200 Free Relay. Whitaker claimed the school record in the 100 Backstroke, finishing seventh in this event at state garnering Whitaker All-State Honors. And whereas Whitaker then became state champion in the 500 Freestyle with a time of four minutes, thirty-four seconds, thirty-four point four-one seconds, again garnering All-State Honors. And whereas becoming a state champion promotes school spirit and community mindedness. Now therefore, I, Randy Pove, Mayor Carney of Missouri, do hereby acknowledge and congratulate freshman Whitaker Stewart of the Carney High School Swimming Team of his great accomplishments in becoming a state champion at the Missouri Class One State Swimming Tournament.
Congratulations. As a freshman, so we're going to see you back here in three more years, right?
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Congratulations. That one's for you.
Yes, I would love to see.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
So I just prepared just a summary of Whitaker's season. But I want to first start out by thanking you guys in this city for taking the time to honor Whitaker. Swimming is oftentimes kind of an overlooked sport. And I think this city does a great job of celebrating it, which I really appreciate. Just because my love for the sport, I'd love to see it shine and be recognized. And I know Whitaker and the stewards love the sport as well and may also want to promote it. So I just thank you guys for giving us a chance to bring that to light and just for celebrating Whit. But from day one of the season, Whit has put forth nothing but a hundred percent effort, both to the sport and this team. Along with our required eleven and a half hours of practice time each week with the Carney Swim Team, Whitaker also went to extra practices with his club team, sometimes adding up to an extra three hours a day, which seven days a week, I mean, that's a lot of extra hours of time. As you can imagine, Whitaker had days where he was exhausted mentally. I mean, he was balancing schoolwork, he was balancing all this swim time. But he never sacrificed the effort that he put into practice as well as the effort that he put into just being with his teammates and being a leader for them. I would often catch Whitaker, like, would be either cooling down or just have extra time at the end of practice. And I'd oftentimes see him, like, working with one of his teammates off to the side, like, giving them tips about their technique, different racing strategies. And as a coach, I mean, you're constantly doing that throughout practice, but sometimes when it's from the pier, it just clicks differently. So I just always thought it was sweet. And that happened, I mean, countless times where I would see Whitaker do that with his teammates. So that was just such a leadership role that he took on there. So starting back, day one of competition, I mean, Whitaker stood out right away. Our first big meet was in Columbia, the Como Invite. And some people say this is the biggest meet of the season because schools from all over Missouri come in and compete at Mizzou, the Mizzou Aquatic Center. And swimmers are not separated by class. So swimmers from Class One compete against Class Two. So it's a very fast and competitive meet. And Whitaker placed sixth in the 200 Freestyle and fifth overall in the 500 Freestyle at that meet. And that was just in September. So we'd only been practicing about a month and, you know, a little over a month at that time. So he was already kind of making a name for himself in the state just in September. And then at conference, just like you heard earlier, Whitaker earned four first-team All-Conference Championship titles. As a freshman, that's huge. So he was in the 500 Freestyle Conference Champ, Conference Champ in the 200 IM. And he was a member of our two championship relays, the 200 Medley and the 200 Freestyle Relays. Whit was also a crucial part in our men's team earning their eighth Conference Championship Title in a row. So just having his leadership there and obviously him winning and getting those points for us. But it was more than that. It was him on the side of the pool cheering on his teammates, no matter their skill level. Whitaker was there ready to cheer on his teammates. So and also watching him race and be competitive like that got the other guys pumped up too. So that was really fun to watch. And then after conference, two weeks later, we traveled to state, which was in St. Peters, Missouri, to compete in the Class One 2022 Misha State Championships. Whitaker swam four events at this meet, the 200 Medley Relay, the 400 Freestyle Relay, the 500 Freestyle, and the 100 Backstroke. The 200 Medley Relay placed thirteenth overall, which he was a part of. He swam Butterfly for that relay and they earned All-State Honorable Mention honors. He also was a part of the 400 Freestyle Relay, which placed nineteenth. While the relay teams did really well, Whitaker really just announced himself in his individual events and it was so fun to watch. So it's a two-day meet, so the first day is prelims, second day is finals. During prelims, Whitaker dropped eight point eight-five seconds to be seeded first going into finals in the 500 Freestyle. In the 100 Backstroke, Whitaker dropped one point seven seconds to not only secure an eighth seed going into finals the next day, but he also claimed our Carney High School Boy Swim Team's school record that was previously held by Von Sloan and had been in place since 2017. So that was a really huge accomplishment and really exciting to watch for the team. So at finals the next day, so you're already tired, you know, you get to bed kind of late, you're tired, you gotta compete the next day. So at finals, Whitaker just swam away, pun intended, swam away with the conference championship or the state championship title in the 500 Free, dropping an additional two point seven seconds to win with a 434-41. And I remember when I, because as the coach of the winning swimmer, I hand out the medals and the guy who got second is a junior, very fast swimmer, and he shakes my hand, he goes, "You guys are just pulling out freshmen out of nowhere, aren't you?" Yeah, I guess so. So it was just really fun to just watch Whitaker get a gold time, get that championship. I remember like one, like the first week of practice, he told me, "Coach, I want to win the 500 Free." I was like, "Let's go for it." And he did it and it was really, really cool to watch him do that. And then, so champion, at finals, the events moved faster. And so really soon after winning the 500, he had to get back in for the 100 Backstroke, where he dropped additional time, so point one-one seconds, to break his day-old school record and end the meet with a 53-1-6 in the 100 Backstroke, which is now our new school record for the 100 back. So as you can see, Whitaker had an amazing season. It was so fun to watch him swim and his teammates loved to watch him swim. He worked so hard and achieved so much and I can't wait to see what he do the next three years. So again, thank you for taking this time to honor him and he definitely deserved it.
Thank you. Whitaker, do you have anything to say?
Um, like, I'm just coming up here. At the beginning of the season, I kind of had two different types of goals. I had like my individual goals of winning the 500 and getting the school record. But I also had like kind of a team goal. I wanted to get the team relay to honorable or state honorable mention or whatever that's called. But I was thinking, I just wanted to get them there because I knew that there was going to be a lot of seniors there who maybe had not had that opportunity before. So I just wanted to get them as close as they could to getting that opportunity as they could. And I ended up doing that, which was, to be honest, it kind of made me feel better about myself than actually kind of like winning state a little bit because I knew that like I was giving them that award and it wasn't just for me. And it was just really nice, especially the meet before, it was a last chance meet, it was before state. I helped qualify one of the relays and one of our seniors wasn't going to be on a relay if I didn't qualify for them. And so we just all swam really fast in that relay, qualified it for them. So he was able to swim at finals and it was just really nice to see him be able to swim. So it was just, it was really good opportunity and it was a near-perfect season and outcome, like, in the, yeah, like outcomes. So it was, it was a really good season and I think it'll be really fun to come back next year. I think I also might be doing cross-country just to get like even more stuff in there because I think if I just do the same thing as last year, then I won't get any better. But if I add cross-country into the mix, then I'll get even better.
No rest, huh?
Yeah, no rest.
Yeah.
Tell them why you didn't swim at your 200 IM.
Oh, yeah, so I got, I wanted to have my record be right next to my brother Spencer Stewart and he had the 2 IM record. So I didn't want to swim 2 IM at state because I didn't want to take his. So next year though, he's definitely fair game. Yeah, so that's kind of all I have to say.
He told us he wanted both of their names on the board for one picture and then he.
And then it's, and then after then it will, I have, I have no doubt that.
I know that my mom's going to show my brother this video, so he'll be talking to me as soon as he gets back. Yeah, that's, thank you guys for recognizing me though. Like swimming's very overlooked, like Jessa said, it's very overlooked usually. But it's really nice to get this like recognition. It's really nice, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. If you guys, now would be a good time to excuse yourself unless you want to stay for the whole meeting, which you're welcome to do so. But now's a good time, yes.
Thank you.
And he also meant leave the light pole.
We are working on it. Yes.
Don't do another survey, I still have the last one.
Uh, next item under personal appearances is we have Kurt Hamilton, our Executive Director of the Carney Richment Council here to provide an update and review the annual report.
Alrighty, thank you. Thanks, David, appreciate that. Yeah, always appreciate being here. I know I've been here the several past meetings, but it's always good just to showcase kind of a annual snapshot of what we've been doing at the KC. I know it's kind of second nature to me because I live and breathe it every second, but it's good to make sure that some of the important people that help secure a lot of our funding get us to know about it too. So just want to walk you through kind of our year in a recap and talk about some of the fun things and then talk about some of our goals and what's next for us. So we'll see what happens. Just a little bit of a reminder, some of the areas of focus that we have. One of the things that it's not updated on this PowerPoint because I already sent it to David and I didn't want to punish him for downloading a second one. But we did change our mission statement just recently where we added the word Holt to our mission statement. So we're improving the quality of life in Carney and Holt, Missouri. We thought this was important because Holt kids are already coming to our school district, half of our board lives in Holt. A lot of the people we serve are in Holt. So since it's kind of a partnership community, we thought it was important to recognize as well. But this is kind of a snapshot of what we recognize as kind of what our focus is over. So we have the Firehouse Community Center, which we do a lot more than just that. So just to make sure that that's just one part of what we do. We're now fully in the Carney Senior Center and that's going to be something I talked about, but that's a big part of our mission as well. Emergency Services is something that we're wrapping up and we'll see that later. Downtown Revitalization, which we're excited for Saturday. And Shop With A Cop, which is also Saturday as well. So we'll walk through some of those things. So here's our goals for what we're looking at for 2023. So if you're, if you haven't heard, we are under contract and purchasing the old recent old office building. So we close on December fifteenth. We're really excited about that. It's taken a village and an army of people to help make sure that that happens. So I'm proud to say that we're about eighteen thousand dollars away of our fundraising goal. And I know with ten days left and I know with Carney, we will hit that. So I'm excited to say that we will be able to pull that off. So the Spark Academy will be what we call it and we will focus on doing middle school programming five days a week to partner with our school district to ensure that there is multiple opportunities. We are attacking the MOJO's problem, as it is more commonly known, and giving our youth something to do in town and kind of spearheading something for more of those teens and tweens. A big goal of what we're looking at in 2023 as well will be paying off some of the new debt that we incurred with the building. We've already completed a few quarter of a million dollar grant applications to help with the Black Foundation, Sunderland Foundation, and some other organizations. So we look forward to applying for more large grants and hoping that some come through to help secure and make that burden a little less. Youth Summer Camps are something that we've been doing in the last seven years, but we want to make sure that we do a better job with it. We've been having an increase in those programs significantly and we'll be seeing more and more of that each year. So it's something that we're going to spearhead and maybe add the idea of more middle school camps since we'll have a new building for it. Our emergency services funding with the federal stream coming from those stimulus packets has run dry. So we will be looking for new opportunities. We've applied for some grants of ten to fifteen thousand dollars and seeing if some of those click and seeing if we're able to offer some of those because we still have people that message us every day about needing rental assistance. Also looking at some sustainable revenue streams that looks with the new academy building as well. Trying to build revenue streams within our organization that's not so grant-based and, you know, referred. And then also not so business as you go, looking at a recession and never knowing what's going to happen around the corner. You want to secure different funding mechanisms and you don't want to lean on each one of them. So just looking to make sure that we secure the ones. Another big part too is some of our internal processes. As we've grown so quickly, we want to streamline some of those and just make our home lives a little bit easier. So just another thing that we're focusing on. You can see this breakdown of kind of what our financials look like in 2022. You can see your support being twenty-seven percent of our budget, second highest. Proud to say the county did support us quite efficiently this year as well, which we're very excited about as well. The county funding comes from being a part of the ARCA funding, but it's the administrative funds that they actually award us to be a part of it. So that's the funding level that you see there and there. I did not include the actual funding that they do for program dollars because it would sway the whole chart. You'd see it be twice as good again. But you can also see that our individual donations are quite high as well. This is not taking into account the capital campaign. So that individual number will be much higher as well. But we do still rely on our businesses. We still do rely on the rental income that we get from the old firehouse and we do bet on some one-time grants, which is always good to see that eight percent is actually double what we got in 2021. And we actually hope that that number will be a lot higher in 2023. But we've never really applied for this many grants. Usually you apply for four grants, you might get one. So now I'm really taking the approach of applying for twelve and hoping for three. So we'll see how many we can for next year. I can apparently just apply as much as I want, so they let me do it, so I keep, I will. So you can see on the next slide what the budget looks like next year. You can see how you guys' funding actually slips to twenty-two percent. And this is what I'm talking about with the new revenue stream where we're basing it more on individuals and really going after that. That's something we've been preparing our organization for, for a long time. But you can see thirty-seven percent of our revenue, that's really important to us because that comes with new participation fees with the new building. But it also comes in with people that have been generous with our capital campaign, turning into new donors. When we've been asking people to make those contributions, we've been saying, hey, this is a one-time purchase, but we're always going to be in need of financial support. Will you be willing to make ongoing donations? And most people have agreed to that, especially our big donors. So our thirty thousand donors or ten thousand dollar donors, they've agreed to continue to support us. And we're excited for that because we'll be able to put that money into our budget next year. We'll be able to do more projects and we're really excited to see what we'll be able to do after this new building. So this year has been really spearheading the idea of the senior center. Next year will be really spearheading the idea of a youth center and we'll just see what our time and energy gets to go into 2024. So this is a little bit about how our youth programming is continuing to grow. So you can see that drastic increase. So what's important is being the eighth year of the program, you can kind of see the program growth. So I came in May nineteen, so fifteen through nineteen wasn't me. That was part of our previous organization. You can see how COVID kind of dipped our programming, but you can see the radical increase of it as well. So I kind of like the four years on the right a little bit more because you can kind of see how our organization's growing with it. And we were still growing in those early years of it, but it was pretty insignificant. It was kind of just adding a few kids here and there. So now I'm happy to say that we're really seeing that extra growth and that's also not taking into account the new kids that we're going to add. So we're excited about that as well. So we've got forty-five kids on our Tuesday Day, that's double than we've ever had before. So the need is there for sure. Our Middle School Day, we see the need and parents are signing up, but they don't want to sign up unless the programming is longer. One day a week doesn't really help a parent when they both have working schedules. As the ever-changing world keeps happening, more parents are dipping back into the workforce to have two revenue streams to support their families and looking for after-school options. That's what we've been doing surveys for for the whole last year and it just makes sense. People, people need childcare and it doesn't end when your kid just turns into sixth grade, even though the school district has no option. So it's something that we feel like we can support and the school district is really excited to partner together. They don't have the resources to be able to do something like this. They struggle enough to be able to keep their own kids' clubs going. So for somebody else to take that burden off of them, they're really excited about. So this is something that we really look forward to and you can see how visits we anticipate having a lot more visits and a lot more kids run through our program next year. So the big one with senior programming, this has been our really big push in 2022. So working with Carney Community Foundation and merging both of our organizations, you can see the amount of seniors that we've been able to reach this year because this is, this is our side of the reporting. This is not talking, we are not recording the meals that we serve three days a week and we're not talking about Meals on Wheels. Those are not represented on our charts because that's still Carney Community Foundation. So you can just see the amount of visits that we have that skyrocket. That's because of our dance, that's because of our mobile food distribution that we're, you know, we're hitting two hundred seniors every month because of that. We're hitting seventy seniors every week with our dance and it's not slowing down. So, you know, at first we thought, oh, can we support seventy seniors a week with the dance or some of the other programming? And they keep coming back. It's the same music and they ain't stopping them. They're enjoying it and we're happy that they're there. So we're excited about it, but the senior, there's a lot of growth still. They add all kinds of programming. You can see that we're doing a Pancakes with Dana before Magical Night this year. We're adding more and more each year, but the ladies that are over there, they do a heck of a job and they make sure that our seniors all have equal opportunity in addition to making sure that they have the emergency sides of it and the necessary bits of it as well. So we'll continue to work on our senior programming to ensure that all of our seniors have ample opportunities. But that building is five days a week now for six hours a day. That's radically different than two hours for three days a week. You can see the impact in our seniors. You can see it in the growth of getting new seniors almost weekly, monthly. So I mean, there's a lot of new people that are coming and people now are seeing it as a destination where people are coming from Lathrum, except through your Springs, Smithville. People come from Liberty, you know, regularly and they're skipping out on their own community center to come to ours. And it's significant for sure to see. On the next slide, you'll see our emergency services. So we wrapped up this program partnering with the United Way, Northern Healthcare Access, and also Metro Lutheran Ministry. You can see we did a pretty good job of splitting our money between the two years. So we helped a total of three hundred and nine families with COVID relief and rental assistance payments. I went back and checked, a hundred and fifty of that was in Carney. So I made sure when we were helping clients with the dollars that we got to receive because of the program, a lot of it stayed here. There was other organizations that helped Carney clients as well. So there's actually more than a hundred and fifty, but that's still quite significant that in two years, a hundred and fifty of our families needed significant help. The average case is about five to six thousand dollars of how much assistance was awarded. We're happy to say that at the end of 2022, we are out of funding, which is a bittersweet. We're happy that we were able to spend all of it, be a part of that program, but it is definitely bittersweet as there is no dollars remaining. Metro Lutheran and Northern Healthcare Access do this more often, but their organizations are located closer to Metro KC, a lot farther away, and it's not a program that our residents really get to take advantage of unless organizations like ours get to step up and be a part of it. Not only that, you know, it puts extra money in the bank account for Carney Trust, you know, local organization as well. So it does a lot for us as an organization because we can apply for bigger grants when we have bigger coffers to offer. So we use it as an advantage to help us do things like the capital campaign that we were able to raise money for this year. So these kind of programmings are great and we're talking with Mark to be able to do more programs. United Way also put us on their Impact One Hundred list for possible grants in 2023. That's a, that's a thing that you don't get to be a part of usually unless you were working with the United Way. So we're excited and it's going to lead to a lot more than just rental assistance payment, so we're able to. Downtown Revitalization, you can see the events and the different things that we're doing and how it is humming. So there's a lot of people that helped make it happen. You can see the drastic amount of increase of volunteers that we had in 2022 just to make sure that we were able to do all the different things from Oktoberfest, a Magical Night, to Movies in the Park. There's always something to do. We've already released our calendar for next year. We've got twenty-two events. You have to do that basically every month, except January because we need a break and we take January off. So there's not a lot to do in January and it's really hard to plan things because the last two weeks are usually Christmas and New Year's Eve anyway. So most of the time, that's really the reason why. And that's why we put February, Wine and Chocolate, so early, so that way we have something to do quickly. But you can see the amount, I mean, we're definitely not slowing down since we've added some of these things. It's definitely increased our attendance rate. Oktoberfest this year, sixty-five hundred people. Magical Night this Saturday, expecting three thousand people. That's what we had last year, definitely could expect more. We got thirty-seven entries in the parade, that's eight more than we had last year already. So all the events are getting bigger and better and not slowing down. We did hire an events coordinator for 2022, Rachel Washam. She's been instrumental in making sure that this was possible, having somebody to support us and doing those events. So it's not just Kurt Hamilton. So we've kind of split them all out and I am proud to say I only do Christmas now. So that is why I'm hanging Christmas lights because it's still my event and I got to make sure that they're put up at end time. So we'll make sure that they're all the way put up. Excuse the extension cords for now, but they will get off the ground, I promise. So Shop With A Cop is our last thing. We actually are going shopping on the same day as Magical Night, so December tenth is Saturday. We've adopted thirty-eight kids for the Shop With A Cop program and we actually double dipped and we took six homeless kids that Carney Family Foundation also had. So both organizations are going to take care of those kids to make sure that they have everything that they need around the holidays. So we're excited about that. But David Parker and Charles Leach are the two officers that we work with. We basically say they're staff even though they don't get paid for it, but they, they do a heck of a job and they've already doubled the amount of fundraising that we usually have gotten in just this year. So they are set up well next year and they plan on taking forty-five to fifty kids, which is more than they've ever done. So this will continue to grow. Being a board member of Carney Family Foundation, there's talks of how we merge more of these together. They do similar things as they both work around the holiday season. So we're talking about ways that we can actually put them together and they can support one another. So we're really excited about that. So that's important too, but that's it, that's all I've got really. So that's a little bit of a snapshot of what we're doing and what craziness we've scooped up. It's been a heck of a year, but we're ready for another one.
Any questions from the board for Mr. Hamilton? If you notice the new holiday lights, Christmas lights, Kurt's been on the roof all day long, getting ready for this weekend. So looks good. Staff, do you have any questions for Mr. Hamilton?
Could you just bring the, the number one trophy and hand it to me right now?
Not yet. Yeah, we have to make sure you earn it. But yeah, one oh two point seven is live streaming the parade again, so we'll see, we'll see what you guys muster up.
Last year, you know, the board was with the Water Department and we got a trophy. So I, I think we're going to be with the Parks Department this year, so.
Makes sense.
That, that's, they're going to actually.
Where the winners are.
Yeah.
We had a trophy the first year too.
Yeah. The board, that, that is Eric.
No, he don't know Kurt.
Right, Kurt. Appreciate all you and organization do for downtown. You know, a lot of the funding from the city, a lot of it is earmarked towards youth activities and, and stuff. So it's really good to see that you continue to fill that need and purpose for the community and you can continue to, me seeing that growth in the organization is specifically the youth parks exciting. So thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks for having me. Thank you, yeah. Keep going, excuse me, I live at home now though.
We'll move on to the consent agenda. Any questions or items of discussion from the board on the consent agenda this evening? See and none, can we entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I make the motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
All in favor? Pose, consent agenda passes, we'll move on to ordinances. We have a motion approving bill number twenty-nine, twenty-two, which will be presented by Mr. Nathan Nicholas with the Law Board of Municipal Law, our city attorney, and ordinance of the city of Carney amending the city code regarding marijuana. Is he joining us via Zoom?
He is. Thank you all. Quite enjoyable, watched so far.
Quite enjoyable, watch so far. Uh, and one of the things that you will have going on in sort of a different direction is recreational marijuana. Uh, this was passed by the voters and has become law. Uh, it's a constitutional amendment, much like the medical marijuana that we dealt with a couple of years ago. However, the recreational marijuana requires that we go back and change a lot of things, and so we have written new ordinances for you all. Essentially, uh, I won't go through, I think it's ten pages or. Almost twenty pages. Uh, only a lawyer could love. So uh, I'll kinda give you kinda the highlights of it. The main thing to know is that you have new entities that you'll be having to deal with. So before, we had just uh medical marijuana, primarily we're talking about dispensaries, but also uh manufacturing facilities, growing facility like that. Now, you have to deal with not only the medical uh facilities, medical marijuana facilities, but also the recreational facilities, which are called comprehensive facilities. The comprehensive, the medical facilities can convert into being comprehensive facilities, or they can stay as medical ones. Obviously, medical facilities can only sell to medical patients. Comprehensive can sell both recreational marijuana and medical marijuana. Our guess is that almost all medical facilities will make the conversion to uh comprehensive facility. In addition to that, uh, there's the possibility that you might have what is uh been described by the constitution as micro-businesses. It's really, I think, a deceptive name, because it's not a tiny business. It is a, a regular sort of dispenser, the early dispensaries and wholesalers. Uh, but these micro-facilities are targeted, the licenses go to certain people. Basically, they are supposed to go to people who uh, the drafters of the constitution amendment thought were discriminated against when marijuana was illegal. Uh, you can make up your own mind whether that list matches up to that description. Uh, but people like uh disabled veterans uh are on that list. Uh, people who have a net worth of less than two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. People who graduate from unaccredited high schools, that's gonna be primarily in St. Louis. And uh people who come from neighborhood zip codes that have a high incarceration rate. My guess is that's not gonna be Carney either. But uh, anyway, those people could certainly get licenseded. So in theory, you could triple the number of businesses that are going to be doing business in Carney. You could have a medical facility, a comprehensive dispensary, and a micro-business all at the same time. So because of all that, we had to expand the definition. Um, there are also throughout this ordinance, a number of criminal penalties for various things, and the drafters said that the only penalties that can be imposed are what they described as civil fines. Uh, there is really no such thing as a civil fine in Missouri law, but as it turns out, municipal ordinances are civil in nature, not criminal in nature. The Supreme Court has been very clear about that. So municipal court fine uh will be eligible, but we wanted to spell out in this that that's what fines were. Okay, so uh, the dispensaries, the rules are very similar to what you had before. We have rules about security, uh, the rules about odor, which is actually the biggest complaint about marijuana facilities. Uh, I use in the craftiness what we call the reasonable nose standard, which is that you can't smell the marijuana from off the property that a reasonable person could. There is a big change, and we had to make these changes about paraphernalia. So paraphernalia was kind of unclear under the medical, under the recreational, it is very clear. Marijuana paraphernalia is now legal. However, uh, other types of paraphernalia remain illegal. So whether a pipe is used for marijuana smoking or used for smoking meth makes all the difference. So we had to kind of break all of that out. We kept the locations the same as what you all had before, which is that these facilities can't be within five hundred feet of an elementary school, secondary school, or daycare, or a church. And uh, the court, I'm sorry, the constitution, and I can't remember with Kearney, where, where Kearney landed on this, on the medical. But early on, we used the definition, the same definition for distance that we use for alcohol and everything else, which is as the crow flies. The Department of Health and Senior Services imposed a new definition, which they call legal walking distance. So if you imagine if a dispensary was across the street from a school, to get from one to the other, in theory, you would have to walk down the street to the corner, cross the street, walk back to get to the facility, and that's how the five hundred feet would be uh measured. Based on that, and we used the same five hundred feet that you had before, but bear in mind that that five hundred feet is now a lot shorter than it was when you all first considered these distances. So in theory, uh, a building could be right across the street from another building and still be five hundred feet away, just depending on how the blocks were laid out. Okay, so uh, we have uh those basically the same rule for all those facilities. We added, because we didn't find it in your code, rules about labeling edible marijuana, which is kind of the big growth industry. Uh, there's a state statute, and basically we copied the state statute. Uh, you'll see in the ordinance, a big red diamond that says THC with an explanation mark. That's the symbol that they came up with. I didn't make that up. Uh, I would've come up with something better, actually. Uh, but anyway, so anything that's, that edible has to have that on there, and also you can't make marijuana edible in a form, basically, that is going to be attractive to children. So we always talk about um gummy bears, you know, marijuana gummy bears, and in theory, under this new ordinance, those would be prohibited. But you could have geometric shapes, more like pills, uh, and, and so they wouldn't be as attractive to children. Uh, we declare marijuana odor to be a nuisance. So we've already got that marijuana facilities have to have the odor rule. Uh, but if, say, you have somebody who, in their house, is smoking marijuana all the time and is bothering their neighbors, now we can uh enforce that through the nuisance rule, like we would do any other kind of nuisance. Getting on to the criminal stuff, and if you're following along. Sixteen now. Cultivation, it used to be that patients could have cultivation of marijuana in their house, had to be locked up and secured. Now, anyone can get a license to cultivate in their house. So we expand those rules to cover not just the medical patients, but also any pa- anybody who's growing marijuana in their house. There's rules on how it has to be locked up and secured, and I think very importantly, one thing that they cleared up is it can't be visible from anybody standing in a public street. So there was a question before about could you grow marijuana in your backyard if you like had, like locked in a locked fence? Uh, now you will not be able to. Marijuana grows very tall, and so unless you had a really large fence, uh, it'd be, it'd be visible from the public. And feel free to jump in if you got questions as I go along here. Uh, residential consumption, we uh, I can't remember if you all had that in there or not, but we definitely added it. So basically, the issue there is, it's not so much of a problem in a single-family house. But if you think about it like an apartment complex, if somebody is smoking in the apartment next to you, that's gonna travel through the walls and things, or at least potentially could. So essentially, the same rule applies. It can't be smelled outside of your area. And uh, if it is, then that's illegal, and we can do something about it. Possession and transportation. So now, it used to be um, the only people with medical card could possess marijuana. Now it's anybody who's over the age of twenty-one. So possession under the age of twenty-one for anybody is illegal, unless they have a medical marijuana card, in which case it's eighteen. Um, that kinda leaves a gap between eighteen and twenty-one. It seems a little gray to me, uh, but made it a violation, and there's fines that are set forth in this code. And the fine, uh, I don't know what you think about them as far as whether they're too high or too low, but uh, they are set by the constitution. So we just used the maximum that the constitution allows, and of course, a judge can impose less. Uh, I'll get into that more when we talk about consumption. Uh, interestingly, on motor vehicles, if you look at the bottom of page nineteen, trying to follow me as I zip through this. Okay, so obviously, you can't smoke marijuana and drive a car, uh, but they've changed the rule. It used to be that anyone who had marijuana in their system, any amount of marijuana in their system, could not drive a car. They've now changed that, and the mere presence of marijuana in your system is not enough to convict somebody of driving while under the influence. You, so the police will have to do essentially field sobriety tests. They, they use drug recognition officers uh to do this, and there are some tests uh, that, that help do this. So they'll need that extra evidence, not just that the THC is in the system. But you can't consume marijuana while operating a motor vehicle. That's a good thing. That would be either smoking it or eating the gummies. But also, and this is different than alcohol, no one else in the car can be smoking marijuana at the same time, what, as you're driving. Which is a really good thing, if you think about it, because if somebody in the backseat is smoking marijuana, then the driver's gonna be a tail. They added, and we added, a uh, some new rules about possession uh on certain property. We're talking there, schools of all sorts, so schools, colleges, anything, anything like that, uh, school buses, and uh, in prison. So no more smoking marijuana in prisons. That's good to know. Uh, public consumption, and this is kind of, I think, probably the, the biggest issue with the recreational marijuana is gonna be people consuming it in public. And so that was obviously a problem under medical marijuana, but it's a bigger problem now. We have more people doing it. So smoking marijuana, anywhere where tobacco is forbidden, is automatically prohibited. That's by the state statute or the state constitution. We have added that consumption in any public place is prohibited and defined in the definitions what a public place is. Now, I will add that there is a curious thing in the constitution that I will explain to you as best I can, but I can't do much more than that. So it's always been the ability of the city to designate places as essentially non-public places for smoking marijuana. So for instance, in uh, in, in these rules, we allow businesses to have a smoking area inside their business. Uh, as long as they're not doing that for commercial purposes. So if they have, you know, somebody who needs to consume marijuana, they could do that in that area. The new rule allows not only the city to do that, but also the Department of Health and Senior Services to do that. So in theory, the Department of Health and Senior Services could declare your city park to be a free smoking zone, and uh, there wouldn't be anything that the city could do about it. Uh, be interesting to see how that plays out. I have no idea why that was added to the constitution. It doesn't seem to serve any purpose that I know of, but it's there, and uh, so it's in your rules too. We added restaurants, cause now that you're talking about uh widespread consumption of marijuana, a lot of that will be included. That's kind of a big thing of people adding marijuana to food, not just uh, like in brownies and things like that, uh, but also uh, main, main entree. So I, what we wrote here was, I think, a pretty common sense regulation, which is restaurants can do it, um, but if they do, they need to post a sign on the front door, so people know that when they walk in, and then also on the menu. So just like you might have a little heart next to it, if it's a heart healthy menu op- option, you also wanna tell people, you know, maybe we'll have a green leaf or something saying that uh, it's a marijuana, it's included in this dish, so people aren't consuming stuff that they don't realize has marijuana in it. Um, and there's a set, a set of fines that's set forth in the statute for that. So that is like a really, really fast uh look through this, but I'm happy to talk about whatever questions you guys have. Uh, what remains to be done is I didn't touch your zoning code. So you'll need to go through, uh, and we'll need to figure out, uh, what you wanna do with the zoning code. We are taking out all of the rules and regulations of zoning code, but you will still have in your zoning code where these different businesses can be located. I assume that would be the same as what we currently have for medical, but uh, you know, you all get to weigh in on that. That's why I didn't touch it.
Any questions from the board uh to our legal counsel? Yes.
Can we change that from five hundred feet to a thousand feet, since we're actually going a different direction to get there?
You can go up to a thousand feet. I used the five hundred, cause that's what you had, but if you think it needs to be further, then you can go up to a thousand.
Five hundred was going straight, but now it's.
Well, that's what I'm saying, is that when you wrote this, it was five hundred feet by the crow flies is a pretty good distance. But as the person walks, I guess, I don't know what the phrase is there, uh, five hundred feet's not quite as far.
We can absolutely do that if that's what you would all like to do.
Does anybody else on the board have a, an opinion on the distance piece of that?
I think I would agree with Dan, and I think you're sho- you're significantly shortening the distance by doing the walking, and if both, if both facilities were in the middle of a block, it wouldn't take much to get five hundred feet, so.
Yeah, it was actually designed to shorten that distance. Uh, they found, I guess, in St. Louis uh that a thousand feet, what, there were, there was a school or a daycare within a thousand feet of almost anything. Uh, and so it was designed for St. Louis, and they shortened it, and now we have to deal with it.
I would assume, however, that if we have anybody within a thousand feet currently, they would be grandfathered in.
Yeah. And also, I put in there that you and the board can uh reduce that, you know, in special circumstances.
I thought that the city was at one thousand feet. I think the medical marijuana, the, the I think medical marijuana started at one thousand feet, and the city did not change the distance. So that's why I think we are, by default, it's the one thousand based on the medical marijuana. I think that's where we sit, because we didn't modify the distance.
Could you hear that?
I can look at your current ordinance real quick here.
Well, he's looking at a couple of other thoughts. Um, in, in the few cities that we've been, that I've been working with, that we've rolled this out to uh, the board or city council, and given the direction to do a thousand feet. So that seems to be where everybody's fallen, given the new uh definition. So you would be consistent with what other cities are doing at this point?
Any other questions or discussion from the board?
I personally think that a thousand feet is a good idea. I think if we don't, we will have a lot of parents, things like that, approachiness. I think it's a good idea.
Hearing that feedback from the board, I guess, can we entertain a motion to re- uh, to, to modify the proposed ordinance to one thousand feet? And, and tonight, we'll look at reading it by title only on our first reading and a second reading at a future meeting.
I'm making motions to make those changes to the ordinance to a thousand feet from five hundred feet, and read on first read.
You can read the proposed ordinance, uh, the first reading by title only, please.
An ordinance of the city of Carney amending the city code regarding marijuana as amended.
Motion to approve.
All in favor? Pose. And since we're still one reading, we don't uh need to pull the board or anything like that, right? Okay.
If I can throw in one more thing, um, while I still have a chance. You can opt out. You'll be hearing something about that in the future. You can opt out of recreational marijuana. But it is a very limited opt-out. Um, you can't do it until November of twenty-twenty-four. That's when you can put it on the ballot, so it would take a fair That's when you can put it on the ballot, so it would take effect in April of twenty twenty five if it passed. And all you'd be opting out of is the facilities themselves. People still could smoke recreational marijuana and possess it and everything. So I really doubt that very many cities will take the opt out action. And I assume you all, did we, did we give you all sales tax ordinance? I can't remember.
You did, and but it is going to be at a later date.
Okay.
Mr. Nicholas, thank you for your time.
Nice to meet you all. Call me if you got any questions.
Thank you. Next item we have is a motion approving bill thirty twenty twenty two presented by Sheila Ernst and our interim city administrator in ordinance amending the Kearney Code of Ordinances, Chapter one forty five, Procedures for Purchasing and Selection of Professional Services.
I just want to go over some of the changes that are included in this amended purchasing policy ordinance. Kind of high level, please stop me if you have any questions. So basically, this ordinance amends the process for approving the purchases and the process for competitively bidding purchases. There are lots of other sections in the ordinance that cover other things. So this one is just approvals and of the actual purchase and those competitive bidding. The process for approving purchases that are seventy five hundred dollars or more and were not budgeted will not change. These purchases will continue to come to the board for approval. What does change is that purchases that were included in the annual budget, which was already approved by the board, will not need to be approved by the board again. And so if it's included, it will not be coming. Budget amendments and contracts will always come to the board for approval, no matter the amount. This does not change. The changes to the competitive bidding process, it actually raises the levels. I think while we did amend a few years ago, I don't know that we amended enough to kind of look at the cost, the today's cost of things. And so basically this, while we're still always doing competitive bidding, it just lowers the threshold. And so purchases of less than five thousand dollars, they can be bid by the department head in the most effective and efficient way. So if that is looking up and doing price shopping online or calling vendors, if it's five thousand dollars or less, department heads are, do need to shop prices to get the best price available for citizens and to be good stewards of taxpayer dollars. But they don't, they don't have to do it in a prescribed way. They can do whatever way is most effective. Purchases of between five thousand dollars and fifteen thousand dollars can be bid informally. But the bids must, that are received, they must be documented by the department head in writing. And then purchases of fifteen thousand dollars or less than fifty thousand dollars are bid informally, but the bids must be documented by the vendor in writing. And then purchases of fifty thousand dollars or more, they have to be formally bid, will have to publish them. There will have to be a waiting period. And then the board will award those, those purchases under these proposed changes. And also there are some definitions of thing, items that would be, there'd be exceptions to competitive bidding. The requirement would be waived if it was an emergency. If it was a sole source purchase, so there's nobody else that actually provides that service. Maybe it's proprietary because we have this certain software and nobody else can provide, provide that service. And also cooperative purchases. So purchases that have been competitively bid and negotiated by another government or organization that allows cooperative purchasing that that is defined. And those would be exempt from being competitively bid, because they already are. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have one. If we're just going to pay things that are budgeted, I understand that, okay, it's already in the budget and we need this vehicle, we already bid, but it'll be. However, as aldermen, we need to know what those are. And in the reason being is we're going to have constituents that's going to say, hey, you just spent this money. Well, we already had an earmark, but the last thing you want as an alderman to go, oh, we did? I didn't know that. You know, and then we look like we're not doing our job because we're not fiscally doing it. We need, we need to have something in place that tells us when that gets triggered, when that you bought that, that vehicle or when we paid for this, whatever we, we've got budgeted. That way, we are informed for the public when they come to us and say, hey, what about this? And then we can say, oh, well, we just spent the money to fix this or to do this. And that way, because it's easy if we just leave it in the budget, that's a once a year thing. We explain what we're going to do. Throughout the year, we need to know when that happens. So there needs to be a, an instrument in that, that I think needs to let all the aldermen know when those expenditures are done.
They would be included in our consent agenda under the paid warrant list, correct? Just like any other expenditure?
Yes.
So we would know relatively soon, once. Does that answer your question at all or what?
I guess I'm not, what, what, what do you, so you're concerned that we would go buy a thirty five thousand dollar vehicle?
Nope.
And you wouldn't know that we did that?
Yeah, well, it's not necessarily that we wouldn't know. It's that the public needs to know what we're spending our money on too. Okay, so when we, we say, okay, well, we're spending, but just like we did on the vehicles today. Okay, now we also know that, hey, this expenditure was made. We knew it was going to be because we had it in the budget. We didn't know when it was going to be.
Sure.
This way, we know that way, if somebody says, we can say, oh, yeah, we spend, forget the car or whatever it was, that yes, we spent this amount of money on here. And it doesn't sound like we didn't know what was being spent. It just keeps the the board a little more current with with what's being spent at the time.
Sure. The reason that this is coming before you tonight is actually because of the cars that were put on there. So one of the things that happened is we're in just this crazy market right now where things are going very quickly. And there was a good chance that we were going to lose the opportunity to purchase these vehicles because of having to wait until after we've got permission. And so.
Even though they were a budget approved item?
Yes, and so.
I'm not talking about holding up that approval. I'm saying isn't just notifying us that it was done.
Okay, so would that, would it work in the purchasing?
Page in the back of our pen that says this happened.
This item was paid out of this budget, you know, so we know it, not, not, not to hold up you from buying, able to buy the car.
Okay.
But it's so that we know.
Would the paid warrant list work or would you like something different than?
I would like something a little different myself. The paid warrant list goes in the all thing, little things, you know, and stuff. But these are the big ticket items that we have budgeted, you know, like the cars and the new Bobcat and, you know, these kind of things. Just so that when people see you got this equipment, we can say, oh, yes, we had that budgeted. Yeah, we put, we bought that this time. It just makes it easier to do that. I'm not saying to hold up those things, that's what I'm saying.
So are you, are you trying, I don't want to speak for you, Dan, but are you just feeling it'd be more transparent instead of putting it in the back of the paid warrant list? Just something upfront that's like, these are some big ticket items we've experienced.
I mean, people don't want to know that, oh, hey, we paid X amount of dollars for lights for the, for the building. But they do want to know, oh, hey, we just spent a hundred fifty thousand dollars for a new crane and no bucket truck, you know? So.
And that obviously would come to you, but what if, would it work if during city manager or city administrator comments, if that was one of the things that we let you guys know during those comments? These are the capital items that got purchased.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Would that, would that be good? Okay. Perfect.
I'm not trying to hold up your.
Oh, no, I, yeah.
Just transparency so we get on.
Absolutely.
Any other questions or direction from the board? Can read the proposed ordinance, first reading by title only, please.
An ordinance amending the Kearney Code of Ordinances, Chapter one forty five, Procedures for Purchasing and Selection for Professional Services. Make a motion.
Second.
Motion to approve. All in favor? Pose, second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance amending the Kearney Code of Ordinances, Chapter one hundred forty five, Procedures for Purchasing and Selection of Professional Services.
No motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Pose, pull the board, please.
Alderman Barker?
Hi.
Alderman Holt?
Hi.
Alderman Spencer?
Hi.
Alderman Lehman?
Hi.
That's unanimous. Ordinance is approved on the second reading. Move on to resolutions. First resolution this evening is presented by David Pavlich, our Community Development Director. Resolution sixty six twenty twenty two, a resolution authorizing the city administrator to sign an agreement with Lampry Nielsen for MS four permit support for the city's storm sewer system in the amount of nineteen nine ninety one ninety four. So Pavlich, I'll turn it over.
Because I have to ask if there are any questions. Most recent census, we went over ten thousand. That's kind of a target number for the EPA to identify communities that are MS four communities. So it's a new regulation or new requirement that we have to follow through on. We received a letter a couple of weeks ago, maybe a month ago, and they give you six months to get your submittals in. So there isn't much time to maybe get into a budget timeframe, but we have to at least get started. As part of the process, we'll have to do a five year plan for trying to reduce contaminants that get into the storm system that then go into our creeks and the fishing river things.
We, we knew that this census would, would push us over and and here it is.
This is one of the things that, you know, being ten thousand forces you to do. And Lampry Nielsen, they, they are a city engineer. They, they do MS four permitting for some other communities that they work with. So they're, they're versed in, in what those requirements are.
So obviously this study will then let us know the impacts of future budgets and costs to implement to become compliant with the new federal regulations.
Right, so yeah, this process will get us into the system, will be permitted through DNRS. Part of the permit process, we'll have to come up with a five year plan. That's where some of those extra costs that that will have to incur over the next five years are, it might be a little front end. So we may have to spend the bulk of the money in the first couple of years, but it's for a five year period at times.
There are no questions from the board. Can you entertain a motion approving resolution sixty six two oh two two in the amount of nineteen nine ninety one ninety four with Lampry Nielsen for the MS four permit?
Make a motion to approve. Second.
All in favor? Pose. Resolution passes. Thank you. We'll move on to mayor's communications. The only item I have this evening is just to remind everybody of our downtown magical night. Our lighted parade and fireworks display this Saturday. So it'll be another wonderful evening in downtown Kearney. And thank you to the Kearney Enrichment Council, the board here, the city for approving funding for the fireworks, Mr. Scholl for our, our local pyro expert and all the volunteers, our, our fire district and our police department for helping make sure it's a successful fun night. So look forward to seeing you all then. We'll move on, we will move on, if I can talk, to the city administrator's report.
So this evening I want to talk about the new monthly financial report that is on page sixty one of your agenda packet. I'm not planning on going into a lot of depth tonight, but kind of want to give you an introduction to it and then let you ask any questions. So this report, if you look at the title page, it is the important things that I really care about this cover page. It tells us the period that it's for the period ending October thirty first. And probably most important to me is that it says unaudited. That means that there could still be reclassification journal entries. There could still be some reconciliation items that still need to be done. So if we ran a report in five months from now, the numbers might be a little bit different due to classification items and things. I think that it's going to be really important for me to make sure that I get this to you timely. And there, there just might be some things that we don't realize until a later period. And maybe something got recorded in the sewer fund that should have gotten recorded to the street department. So those are the types of things that might change. On page two, this page is kind of a quick way to see every single fund in the city. It has the fund names. It has the revenues that were received year to date, the expenditures that were received year to date, and then kind of the revenues over expenditures in that last column. What is, I think, important to note about this? It gives you a, a clear idea of whether or not our current year revenues are enough to meet our expenditures. We budget fund balance. So if we had prior year savings from prior years, that is kind of a revenue in the budget. And then we oftentimes will budget to spend those prior year. This sheet does not take into account those prior savings. It is showing you current revenues and current expenditures. So you can kind of see, are we able to cover all of our expenses without dipping into savings? Because obviously if we use all our savings, the savings is gone. We have to make more savings in order. So it's very important to kind of know how your current year revenues are trending against current expenditures. You can see all of that for every single fund on this one page. And then pages three through five, they are kind of showing the same information, but they also show you what we budgeted. Again, not with fund balance, but you can take a, a look at this page and see what our expenses were for the month. In the first column, all seven months. In the second column, what our annual budget is and how much we have left of revenues and expenditures. And that's probably enough for you guys tonight. I won't bore you anymore. But I'll kind of go over a different point each month. I plan in on doing this each month. And so I want to make sure that you guys are familiar with it and at least understand how I'm using it. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. And then my only other thing, Mayor and Board, is that we, our next meeting will be at six thirty PM on December nineteenth.
Great, that concludes your report. We'll move on to alderman discussion. Alderman Barker?
I just want to add to your comments. Thanks to Kirk and the, the Kearney Enrichment Council for decorating our building. It looks lovely and I hope to see everybody on Saturday.
Alderman Lehman?
Just digging back off what Alderman Barker said, looking forward to being at the parade Saturday. So look forward to seeing everybody there and winning that trophy.
Alderman Holt?
I like trophies too. So let's do this. I found even the year when we couldn't do the parade and it was a backwards parade, I still thought it was a, a great thing for our city. And I look forward for this. I've been telling a lot of people about coming and we're, we're starting to get it known where people out of town are coming in for it. So as this thing builds, it's, I think it's, you know, we got thirty seven, we will have forty, forty five floats next year, you know, so.
I hear if our board president dresses up as an elf in public, not just church, then maybe that will bring more people to the community.
You saw that. Suit's a little big, yeah.
Alderman Spencer?
You know, ditto, like the sign says on thirty three, we'll, we'll say ditto to all that. I would add to be sure you peek in, quite a few of our businesses are participating. The museum is one of those. Um, the museum is one of those. Um, children can go in there to write a letter to Santa. And Santa's mailbox is in there so they can mail it too. Um, I believe one of the businesses is passing out hot chocolate. Uh, so a broad range of different things. So be sure you peek in all those too.
Yeah. Well, also make sure and shop local so that you can get your raffle ticket. Chambers giving away $3,500 cash. So make sure you can get your raffle tickets. Who knows, you might win $3,500 bucks. Shop local.
The next item is we do have a notice executive session, a closed session per RSMO 610021 subsection 1, legal actions, causes of action or litigation involving a public governmental body in any confidential privileged communications between a public governmental body or its representatives and its attorneys, 610021 subsection 2, leasing, purchase, sale of real estate by a public governmental body where public knowledge of the transaction might adversely affect the legal consideration therefore. And 610021 subsection 3, hiring, firing, disciplining or promoting of a particular employee by a public governmental body. When personal information about the employee is discussed or recorded. And just a reminder, our meeting will be adjourned. Once we adjourn our executive session, so this will conclude the, the public open part of our meeting. And if we can consider a motion to go into our executive session at 7:41.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session at 7:41.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Roll call vote, please.
Alderman Holt?
Aye.
Alderman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Lehman?
Aye.
Alderman Barker?
Aye.
That's unanimous. We will enter into our executive session. Ryan, you are free to, uh, disconnect our, uh, recording.